Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, May the 2nd, 2023. The time is now 6:00 PM. Regular meeting of the city council, the city Trinidad will welcome the order in person as well as through Zoom. Would you please rise for the presence of agents? Many would be pleased with this.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
DeBono.
Here.
Griege.
Here.
Ogletree.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
You.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Council have any changes that they would like to make to the agenda? There are none? There came motion?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All vote, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Griege.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes, the answer for you.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy item and staff reports, 380, River Cross River Trail Access. Mr. Ruder, what do you have?
Mr. Chadley is here to present on that to you today.
Here, Chad. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I apologize for not reading the agenda last week and having missed the work section, so my apologies. So, report on the river access. So primarily, this is a discussion about the Old Soprus Trail that will connect from town to Trinidad Lake State Park. So we have been working pretty much since the first of the year with a real estate attorney to talk about possible land acquisition opportunities. We then had a contact with Trust for Public Lands, Jake Houston and group. You'll probably familiar with them with the work they did in regards to Fisher's Peak. They are very much involved. They have agreed to help the city in whatever capacity they can to help do whatever necessary to basically obtain the property that we need to in order to develop the trail that was designed years ago by THK and engineered. And so we'll have a river connection or a trail connection, excuse me, along the river from the end of the Boulevard Edition to Trinidad Lake State Park. Right now, we're mostly focused with, there are some different trail alignments. Originally, we were hoping to stay along the river and that had run into some different snags with different property owners. So then we had talked about building trails along the right of way of County Road 20.8, which we had had conversations with the county and that was something that we were getting to work towards, but it was not our most optimal trail alignment. It's kind of hot. It's not nearly as scenic as being down by the river. We then, actually, this was Wally who then had a conversation with BNSF about the Old Soprus Line, the rail line that's now abandoned, and they said if we, if we being the city, did the necessary title research and property research to determine who owned the rail bed and such, that they would then deed the rail bed over to us. So that's kind of what initiated the conversation with the real estate attorney to start that process, that being a possible trail alignment to then put the trail along the riverbed, or, excuse me, along the rail bed. And in all those conversations, everybody kind of determined if we could actually obtain the property and go back to our original trail alignment, which was a trail alignment along the river, would be the most optimal thing. That would be the best interest of the city and of its residents and for the future of recreation here in Trinidad. So, long story, big circle, that's where we are now. We're working with Trust for Public Lands. They are the, as you know, the professionals in working in acquiring property for public access and for public enjoyment. They have been on the project just a couple of weeks now. We've already had great conversation and they've been working towards that end. So, we think that if we're able to acquire the property north of County Road 20.8 to the river, that we'll be able to have a great open space park and a place for the best trail alignment, which would be to have a trail as close to along the river as feasibly possible and really extend the Boulevard Edition out towards the dam. And then we'll work with the Army Corps of Engineers and CPW to make that trail connection with the South Shore and then start to work on Trail Connectivity at Fisher's Peak State Park. Yes, Mr. Shu or Mr. DeBono?
If you acquire that land, how many access points will we have then?
Well, that's great because if we're able to use the County Road as the boundary, we'll have multiple potential access points to the trail and to the river because we'll have opportunity to come off of 20.8 instead of just kind of Boulevard Edition now.
Where is County Road 20.8?
It's that crazy exit, if you like, I don't know how to explain.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. What he said.
Is it feasible to, I guess easements aren't feasible for a project like that?
Easements are feasible. We've talked a bunch of different, you know, options and easements is one of them. And we could do a trail on the easement. As we discussed, talked more about that, the idea kind of grew to, well, it'd be great to have a trail, but if we could have some additional property, could really open it up into an open space park and have then multiple trails create loops and other opportunities similar to what's in the Boulevard Editions. So it's not just a one single track trail, but multiple trails, multiple opportunities for wildlife conservation, for, you know, possible recreation expansion. And that's kind of where we've focused our direction now is to make it as big as we can.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I did send a guy, not to mention any names. Did you talk to him about?
I have yet to talk to him yet, but I, but.
Because he's, that would be a big break right there.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, most of the stuff now, since Trust for Public Lands is kind of running point on that, we're kind of letting them take the lead as far as contacts, just to focus. So there's not a whole bunch of people in the conversation.
Yeah, because he wanted to talk to you.
Yeah.
Sounds pretty confident that you could cut this deal to make it happen, or are you?
Well, I told, because we were having a discussion between the real estate and the attorney of the Trust for Public Lands as to who was going to take lead and we kind of had to narrow it down and get somebody to go ahead. And so I told the Trust for Public Lands, we're putting all our eggs in the Trust for Public Land basket and that they, and Jake Houston, who was kind of the point of contact for the Trust for Public Lands in Southern Colorado, said that they could get it done. So I am going off of his confidence.
I have no questions. I think that'd just be fantastic. I mean, that'd put you to be able to go from Kit Carson Trail all the way out to.
Absolutely.
The lake. So that would be fantastic. Excited to hear that.
Yeah.
How many property owners do you have to deal with?
Right now, there's primarily one. That would be if we were able to attain that property, we could pretty much do. Ideally, we'd like to, you know, we work with, San Isabel has property down there. There's some other property owners that we would like to work with. But right now, Trust for Public Lands says, let's just deal with the major one and as we work with that, hopefully other property owners will come to mind and we'll be able to. So at the most, three really?
The other question, you said that there were, there could be multiple access points getting down and you were saying that there could be some additional acreage. About how many additional acres, how much additional acreage would that entail? Any ideas?
I'm guessing roughly from what I've been told, depending on parcels and what we're to acquire and stuff, it'd be about 200 acres that we would look that would then be this big, a big open space park.
So, you know, it sounds like what you could do with that, if that were to come to fruition is, I'll give it Miss Ogletree, she's got her ass. There's a baby, haven't you?
Yeah.
I guess the good thing that would be is that you could turn that into like a parking area, if the access point is correct?
Absolutely.
Parking and camping, maybe, or overnight parking, whatever. It'd be kind of nice to have that.
That would be, that's one of the advantages of, in the conversations, we've talked about how much property do we really need for an actual trail? And the conversation expanded, well, if we could border or have access to 20.8, we could have different trailheads, we could have different amenities that allows for much more accessibility to the river off of 20.8 rather than just one, say, at the Boulevard Edition or one down there. So, yes, to answer your question.
Ms. Ogletree, you have a question?
I do. Mr. Chadley, thank you for the work you've been doing on this. It's so great to see the ball rolling. Do you have an idea of where a person would need to have a state park access along this way in order to keep going? Is there some point where people are going to be, you know, beyond this point, you have to have a state park pass?
Pretty much not until you cross the dam and we're onto state product property. There's part of it that would go through Army Corps of Engineers because Army Corps of Engineers mostly has the, manages the property downstream of the dam. So there is conversations with Kim Phelan and Army Corps of Engineers and they're very supportive of this idea of having this connection. But you wouldn't need a state park pass until you cross basically over the dam and the South Shore area. Within that, you need to have the state park pass.
Okay. And if all these deals work out, do you have a target date of when this would be a possibility, an actual trail?
I'm hoping tomorrow you can get on the bike and ride the whole day, in all honesty. That is a great question. I really don't know. I do know that Trust for Public Lands is working on it very hard. I would like to see something happen by the end of summer to know where we are. And then trail construction and that depends on funding and that could be a year or two or so down the road. But my focus is, we've been working on this project, it seems like, for decades and I've always kind of gotten bogged down. I want to see this proceed as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
The, have you determined the rail bed as to who owns that and where does that sit at this point?
So, there is, it's great because BNSF, they didn't start keeping really good records until just after they abandoned the line. And so they really don't know who owns it. Conversation with property owners, they believe that they own the rail bed. BNSF, of course, says, well, we, it's our rail bed. So really, we haven't got very far because we kind of abandoned that aspect in the hopes of being able to just acquire all the property and not have to worry about rail bed ownership.
I think this is a real bad.
Your typical railroad sized rail bed, maybe 10 feet from side to side. In some places it's noticeable, in some places you can't even tell there.
I think they're doing a tremendous job and thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
And we really look forward to the future, what recreational activities that we'll be able to have in this, in this area.
Yep, lots of opportunity.
Any other questions?
Mayor, council, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to, as part of this, point out, Greenway Foundation will be coming down on the 22nd to do a very detailed presentation to you all, all the work they've been working on.
Item four, petitions are communications oral or written. Do we have anybody sign?
We do.
You still want to hold it up?
Yeah.
Department of what? Department of Trails?
Kristi Lynn Carr?
Could you think? I'm Kristi Lynn Carr from Trinidad. I'd like to address the city about people wandering the streets in the daytime and nighttime continuously. They are, some broke down, some are locals without funds, and some are panhandling. Some of your locals are panhandling. And I'd like to offer my assistance to solve this.
I'll tell you what, the best thing to do is to get ahold of Mr. Ruder, our city manager, and talk with him and see what direction he will advise you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Elizabeth Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I'm Elizabeth Kelly, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I just thought, because May is National Historic Preservation Month, that this would be a good time just to check in with you and make a few brief comments about what's up with historic preservation from the commission's perspective. And I really just wanted to start, first of all, with thanking you all and especially the staff for investing in boards and commissions by doing training, which I think was really well received and well done. And we just really appreciate that. Not only training about how to be on a board and commission, but that you all have supported funding for the HPC over the years and allow us to attend the Saving Places Conference each year, which is an amazing resource that we bring back to the community. The budget that you approved also provides for community outreach, which we're doing, as you know. June 3rd and 4th, we're doing the Second Annual Echoes of History Event at Space de Cray and then our baseball game in Central Park on Sunday. And the idea of that is really to support the next generation of citizen preservationists. That's kind of what I've been calling it. You know, involving people beyond the walls of this chamber, beyond the walls of City Hall in owning the cultural and architectural history that we, that we have here. And also thanking the people who came before us, Ms. Ogletree, other HPC members, city staff who have worked really hard to make sure that our commission is a functional commission. And then quickly, status update. As many of you know, the last couple of years, we've landmarked four buildings. We did create a brochure, very basic brochure to help us discuss and educate about historic preservation. We're doing that Second Annual Echoes of Colorado, excuse me, Echoes of History Trinidad, Colorado. And we really focused on and were intentional about collaboration and doing that navigating the open meetings laws and really trying to do that in a way that took a little bit of practice force, but I think we were able to achieve that. We worked with Main Street, Historic Main Street, Trinidad Historical Society, Southern Colorado Wine Museum and many others to put this together. So, we also experienced, primarily staff experienced, and we received our first quadrennial evaluation for the Historic Preservation Community Commission, for us anyway, the first one, from History Colorado. So that was an experience in learning how to say quadrennial. Going forward, just to close this out, we really do want to explore. We haven't really broached staff with this yet, but looking at creating a historic preservation plan, basically a roadmap for the city. Where have we been? Where are we now? Where do we want to go and be intentional about historic preservation? And also, as I say, to continue these efforts to create stakeholders and stewards all over the town so they really feel like they're part of it. I know that you've received invitations to our event on June 3rd and 4th, I believe, from the city staff. And we were asking you, Mayor Rico, if you could come about 9:00 AM on the 3rd to help us welcome, say a few words to the attendees. We're pretty excited about it. We hope we have a good turnout.
Let me know when, I meant to say, if you would email me all the information.
Okay.
What time to be there and where?
June 3rd, about 9:00 AM, but we will know you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Hugh Moore?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to know if there's anything that could be done for the goat heads in the dog park. That's pretty much it.
Could you take that into consideration and see what's?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Just so everyone knows, we have authorized about $25,000 worth of improvement spending for the dog park. So we're hoping to get that taken care of very quickly.
Okay. Last year, they, they like dragged it with something and then just spread them out so they can't even be removed. Okay?
We talked about that problem at the Urban Forestry Board meeting a couple of weeks ago and they're going to have a goat head festival down there.
Oh, boy. All right, that's all I had to say.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Goat head, goat head.
Goat head.
Yeah.
That's a first.
Yeah.
On to item five, our consent agenda. Item 5A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of April the 18th, 2023. Item B, approval of the bills for one million, eight hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and nine cents. Item C, approval of the payroll, April the 29th, 2023 through May the 12th, 2023, in amount of four hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Entertaining motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Call the rule, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Griege.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 6, 68, public hearing for consideration of earnings, correcting the city's water rate schedule. Hearing is now open. Ms. Veal? Oh, Mr. Veal. I don't know what we all have got to present, so.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Before we get started, I'd like to hand it out.
I guess the big question is, did everything get corrected?
Yeah.
On all of the changes that get done?
Yes. Thank you.
Is that the billing paid, the ones that?
They're still getting up today.
They're still working on?
Yes. I'm not sure what billing cycle they're at currently, but they're getting everything back in order now. So everything's a lot better. This is part of it. So one of the items that we have to do, you know, we would not be firing them right. So, as you know, our previous water rate study, we had a few issues that we had to resolve. So far, everything seems to be working out okay. There are, will be backup. As you know, the HICLO program, which we rewarded, we have to come up with additional money, which this water rate study will be supporting. We also put in for the HICLO program, just this past month, we just received over $6 million for the water tank. We have, we just received an email saying that it has been moved forward to the next step.
Is that to the appropriations, I guess, is probably what it's going?
So, yeah, so that's the good news. It hasn't been accepted yet, but at least it's moving forward to the next step, so. And if that comes through, we're going to need about another one to 1.2 million dollars with the matching fund, so. But that's moving forward. It's not guaranteed yet, but it is moving forward. So that's the good news.
I know I got a call from their representative, a little over a week, about a week and a half, a little, two weeks ago. And I impressed upon him that this particular, this $5 million was very, very important because of what he had to do, so.
Exactly.
And, you know, I told him to make sure that the governor or that the senator was well aware of how important it was because of how the tanks were up there, so hopefully leave that out.
Yes, we do. So, we need to continue to move this forward. Everything looks like it's going in the right direction so far, as far as the water and sewer rate studies. Couple of concerns we have had since the past meeting. When the gas and power side did their studies, they're governed by the PUC. They, or they have to notify the public like 30 days in advance as far as the rate increases. Water is not governed by the PUC. We're governed by our home charter. And we have done everything necessary as far as that's concerned, as far as we have to make the public in a paper prior to our first reading, our second reading. We've done that twice already, so we've done everything we needed to. But what we have found out, in our water bills or utility bill, there's a graph in the water bill and it shows you how much consumption you have. Well, not anticipating that was going to happen, people that were not aware that they were having a water and sewer rate increase, in-town customers, it was normally 1650 a month and it moved to 2475. So they look, oh, my water bill went up. And they look over at the graph and it shows a large spike. Now they're thinking they have a possible water leak. But what that's doing is, we also had a conversion from cubic feet to gallons. And we had 1,000 cubic feet were the minimum. Well, that's now 7,000 or 8,000 gallons. That's the reason that graph is showing that spike. It's because of the conversion. So they're thinking that they have a water leak and they're really worried. So we just put these mailers in all of our water customers on Monday. So they went out to every water customer to kind of help explain to them that there is a water rate increase going on water. So it explains about the conversion and that. So that's, we just put those in the mailers yesterday. So all of our customers should be getting that. The only other question that we've been asked is, and I've never really been asked that before, but it's brought to light now more so just because of the water rates increases. Some of our rural customers, they already pay higher water rates than the in-town customers. And there are several reasons for that. The in-city customers pay city sales tax on property taxes. When you buy a vehicle, you pay city sales tax. You have camping trailers, utility trailers, all of those, you pay city sales tax. If you live outside the city limits, you don't contribute as much city sales tax as the in-city limit, property owners do. And our city sales tax is what pays our wages, our pipe, our material, our health benefits, our city's insurance. It pays all of our expenses and they don't contribute as much. That's the reason, one of the reasons they pay a higher water rate. And that's not just city Trinidad, that's pretty much standard everywhere you go. The other reason too is like a lot of people up on Highway 12, we have 35 miles of pipeline coming down. They think that, well, the pipeline's already there, they could simply tap on it, it shouldn't cost them anymore. But we have, we had to install eight pressure regulating stations along Highway 12. And those, today's cost, if you had to install, those would be anywhere from 40,000 to 50,000 dollars apiece. Without those regulating stations, as I think some of you are aware, the water would just race down into town. It would actually create a backside shortage. So we get complaints every now and then, hey, I don't have no pressure, like Segundo sometimes. So we have to maintain those regulating stations. Those are set, designed to close and hold pressure back for the people on Highway 12. Without those, they wouldn't have pressure, it'd actually create a backside shortage. So there's a lot of added expenses. We have to hire an additional serviceman. We're, gas, electric, just have one serviceman. We have a rural serviceman plus an in-town serviceman. So you have an employee, our staff, extra truck, extra benefits. He has to do all the locates and service works along Highway 12. There's a lot of additional expenses that come along with our extraterritorial water customers. So we've had some concerns and questioned that, but once we explain that to them, they pretty much understand that. And they didn't realize that. Why do we charge them all for water? So those are some of the issues. There's only a few issues we've had and those are two of them.
Thanks for the explanation. I really appreciate that.
What expense, I mean, how much more expensive do they pay for the water?
They pay.
I mean, this is just for everybody.
Just the bill. In-town, the base rate is 1650. It went up one and a half times to 2475. Rural customers were 2750 and it went to 4125. They pay about roughly one and a half times more than inside city customers do, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you done?
The only, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
This just hit me and I apologize if I've asked this before, but I don't remember. How do you determine a large commercial, large residential? Is it just the size?
Size. Yes, so 5 eighths, three-quarter inch or residential, inch and a half and larger are your commercial, industrial and associations.
So like office buildings downtown, those are small?
Residential towns like for our homes are generally three-quarter inch or if you have a city, it's a minimum. Residential taps like for our homes are generally three-quarter inch, or if you have a swimming system, you need more volume of water, they'll go to one inch. That way they have to have multiple zones without having to have several zones. So the more volume, the larger lane. Once you get to inch and a half, now you're talking industrial or commercial, where you obviously need more volume of water. So it's by your tap size.
Okay.
And meter size.
I couldn't figure out how you determine.
Yeah, now, if it's a commercial business, then obviously you're in the commercial size, because if you just have restrooms, restaurants, it's three-quarter inch. It's still commercial just because of the business.
Do you want me to have any questions?
No.
Ms. Ogletree, have any questions?
I did have one. For our customers that are, get a monthly bill on an analyzed rate, what sort of notice did we give them about how their rate would be affected?
Well, that's the thing, we never really gave them a notice, because like I said, one of them governed by the PUC, we're governed by our home charter. So as long as we make public notice, so. So, but what we have done, our water associations are greatly affected because they, we failed them, and then they in turn failed their customers. So we have notified them in advance that we've been working with them prior to this, helping them to try that way they can determine what to charge their customers. But we haven't worked along with the water associations all along, just not the residential customers, because it doesn't impact them as much as it does the associations.
Okay, I'm sorry if I'm covering ground, you already did, the sound isn't great, but do we have any sort of, is what you're sending out, is that some sort of an explanation of what's going on with their bills? And why they've gone up if they're on an annual contract?
Yeah, I can read it to you real quick since you're not present to have it. It says, Dear City of Trinidad Water and Sewer Utility Customers, this notice is to inform you of the rate increase pursuant to the City of Trinidad Code of Ordinance Number 3073 and Ordinance Number 3074, affecting the water and sewer rates scheduled to all customer categories as amended and became effective on April 1st, 2023. The rate increases were necessary to maintain our operating and maintenance of our drinking water quality and sewer standards. Water rates were adjusted at a 50% increase, and the sewer rates were adjusted by a 40% increase. The water rates have only increased by $10.32 in the past 48 years. The second major change that you will notice on your utility bill is the unit billing of cubic feet of water to gallons. Due to this conversion, you will notice a spike in your current monthly billing graph. We apologize for any confusion, and we greatly appreciate your understanding during this transition. And if you have any questions, please contact us at the city all phone number. And it also shows the conversion from cubic feet to gallons along with the graph, and how to understand it when they get their utility bill.
Okay, what will they need to do then to get a new monthly rate? Because they won't know what, that that monthly rate is based on their annual usage a year back? So will it take a year before they can get that kind of a billing again?
I think you're talking sewer now. This, the water is.
At the budget billing mark.
Oh, for budget billing?
Yeah.
That, I.
Yeah, that's the word I'm looking for.
Okay, budget billing, I have no idea how they work that, I couldn't answer that, I'd be guessing.
Okay.
I don't know how they do their budget billing.
We did a press release.
Okay.
A release on Facebook, and we also provided links to the website, we updated that information. So it's on our city website, Facebook, and the media has it as well.
And I believe that, Councilmember Ogletree, did the budget billing carry over with the conversion, correct? Yeah?
Yes.
We will, we will find out and get that information to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Questions?
I have no questions.
The only I want to say is, you know, anytime that there's an increase, like I said, the last time we talked about this, is that people are concerned about the dollar amount, but they're very involved in the use. And, you know, like I said, is that it's, it's better that we raise our rates and have money to be able to take care of ongoing expenses. Because I sure don't want to get into, this city to get into a situation where we get bad water, and then we, like it's happened in Michigan, like I said before.
I agree.
And this way, it allows us to stay on top of good drinking water that we do have now, so. Thank you for anything. Anyone in the audience or online want to speak for or against the ordinance? Hearing none, hearing is now closed. Item six A one, second reading of an ordinance correcting the city water rate schedule. Entertained motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item B, six B, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance correcting the city rates for sewer service. Hearing is now open.
My turn.
Now it's missed, you know.
So, as Mark mentioned, we did send the letters out, so again, probably should have done that ahead of time, but hindsight 2020 can't do that, so. As far as the billing goes, it seems like things are under control. I've kind of looked at a few utility bills, have gotten a few calls, and our billing office has been getting calls questioning, do I have a water leak because of that graph thing? But I'm hoping, once they receive the letters, again, the information, Anissa's been very helpful to put information on our website for us. And so hopefully, they'll be a little bit more clear of what's going on. Most of the calls that I've taken from customers, they haven't been bad calls or anything like that. They've basically stated, okay, I understand what's going on, and understand that the rate increase was necessary. And so I haven't had a whole lot of major complaints that, oh, why are you doing this? Everybody seems to kind of understand, so. Again, with the water and sewer ordinances, the projected overall increase was supposed to be 40% as presented to you, which, as it started being built out, it didn't happen that way. So we started with the original ordinance and just ensured that there was a 40% increase to all customer categories. Some of the other major changes that we did in that is we removed the average winter consumption from the ordinance. And then we implemented the minimal, the minimum allowable gallons. And so that seemed to kind of correct everything, so. Waiting to see what happens, fingers crossed, everything looks good, but I did look at a bill from, it was a commercial account, and it was seventeen hundred dollars. And so our billing office already had done the bill reversal for them and had rebuilt them again, and the corrected amount was like four hundred and something dollars. They're like, they're freaking out a little bit, which I would have done, done the same thing. Our billing office has been working really hard, trying to get those bills corrected.
Questions on this bill? Ms. Ogletree, have any questions? Any questions over here?
No questions.
No.
Well, you know, it's good to see that, like, it sounds, seems that people are very understanding of the major increases and the reasons for them, and even of the problems that we've had recently, they understood that we are making strides in correcting the problems. So thank you for doing that, and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience or listening in online wants to speak for or against the ordinance change? Hearing none, hearing is closed. B one, second reading of an ordinance correcting the city rates for cities for sewer service, entertained motion?
So moved.
First, second, over there, okay? Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none?
Yeah, wait one second. Yeah, with some unfinished business, don't forget a trash can. I mean, do this. Bear with me.
Do I finish up this?
Computer going, boot up. No. No. What I was looking for is the, the residential. Okay.
On to item eight, miscellaneous business, eight eight, memorial resolution acknowledging the contributions of Eugene Duran upon his past passing. I'll read the resolution. A memorial resolution of the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acknowledging the contributions of Eugene Duran upon his passing. Whereas Almighty God, in his infinite wisdom, has seen fit to take Eugene Duran from this earthly life. And whereas Eugene Duran faithfully served the people of the City of Trinidad as a member of City Council, and Mayor Protem of the Trinidad City Council from 1982 to 1984. And whereas during his lifetime, Eugene Duran served our country in the United States Air Force, traveling the world to deliver cargo to his fellow servicemen. As an insurance man, salesman, business owner, and coal miner, United Mine Workers of America Local 9856, Union President, UMWA International Auditor, and UMWA District 22 Representative, as well as a member of the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, F O E 179. And whereas, upon the passing of Eugene Duran, the City of Trinidad wishes, by this resolution to acknowledge his many contributions to the community, and to express its regret and sorrow to the family of Eugene Duran. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, that the mayor and city council do hereby extend their condolences to the family of Eugene Duran, and by this resolution do hereby remember the many outstanding contributions he made to the Trinidad community. Be further resolved that this resolution shall become a part of the official minutes of the proceedings of the Trinidad City Council, and a copy of the same shall be provided to the family of Eugene Duran. Introduced and adopted on the second day of May 2023, Phil T. Rico, Mayor, along with all of our city councilmen, Aaron Ogletree, Mayor Protem, Eli DeBono, council member, Karen Grego, council member, Naaman Thurman, council member, Franklin Schu, council member, Aaron Williamson, council member. Thank you very much. That being said, entertain motion to accept the resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept the memorial resolution acknowledging the contributions of Eugene Duran upon his passing.
Entertained second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And we'll all have to get a search engine or something, I'm sure. I'm not sure if we'll do it after the meeting, or we'll get it done, okay? Item eight B, consideration of bid results for the bike lane striping project, number zero six dash 2020, in amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars to the intended group. That item was put out to bid four times. C dot grant was seventeen thousand five hundred, the var match is thirty-two thousand nine hundred four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Entertained in motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Just, are you here?
I am.
Give us some information, please.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So we received three bids for the project. One of bid wasn't on a proper bid form, so we basically rejected it. So at this time, the perennial bidder is double A striping. No, I'm sorry, that was the one that was inappropriate. American Striping Company was the, the next law spin, so. At this time, we, we would like to proceed with awarding the contract so we can get that project finally going. You have any questions?
Questions, please.
What is the overmatch all about?
Basically, C dot came up with seventeen five. At the end of the day, we gotta come up with thirty-two five.
Which equals a forty-nine?
Yeah, forty-nine.
Right.
Round it out.
Okay.
Other questions?
I have, where, where are we gonna put this bike lane, striping?
Yeah, so there's a portion of Kansas, Nevada, and a little bit of Colorado, like in front of Trinidad builders, is where it's planned. It's not, it's not a whole lot, but it's a start.
I can't believe the price.
I, I know.
We have, we have.
That is outrageous.
We have striping going up those places. Yeah, or in Kansas. Where, are you putting a stripe next to that stripe, where they go into the lanes, or how are we gonna do that?
It's, it's a double lane, and the bike symbol, it's gone off, it goes up on one side of the street. It's a double stripe, it basically controls the.
So.
Yeah, it's kind of, we already have, I want to, you understand what I'm saying, we already have a stripe there that goes towards where people park their vehicles and that.
Right.
Is it going on that side of it, or in the street side? The traffic area?
It might, it's going on the, on the side of the road, on the edge.
On the inside. Okay, okay, that's right. Okay, I was just kind of curious how they were gonna do that.
Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions?
I just wondered, is the striping going to be something that we are gonna need to do periodically, or is it more permanent, like the recent striping that we've had done at our intersections?
We're using the epoxy, so we're hoping we get a little bit more life span out of it compared to the other product, so. But yes, eventually it'll have to be re-striped, but we're, we're hoping we don't have to do it for a while.
I, I'm happy about having bike lanes, I, I think that's a good start, I just want to make sure that they, they stay. That's all.
Questions over here?
Mr. Just, what, what are they intended, the lanes, what are they intended to provide connectivity to and from?
Well, eventually this, going up Nevada, we could go on up, eventually up to the top of Simpsons, or turn and work our way on out to the Wormhole Trail. That was the thought process on that. Kansas, I'm not entirely sure, but it's a nice white road that allows a bike.
Okay, so it'll, it'll provide connectivity, say hypothetically, from the Wormhole Trail to Simpsons Rest down to the builder's area?
That, what we're trying to do is bring it back into Commercial Street, was the thought, that's why we would turn on the little bit section of Colorado, back onto Commercial.
Okay.
And then, that's the thought process.
So the plan would be from there on Commercial, you're sort of on maybe city sidewalks potentially, or?
Not, no, I, I don't foresee putting bicycles on the sidewalk.
If, if you're a person traveling from the Wormhole Trail, and you say you want to get to downtown, the, the bike lane is just gonna end there at five points hypothetically?
Hypothetically, or, yeah. That, that's the thought anyway.
There's nothing going down San Juan towards Central Park?
Not at this time.
And then, I mean, just another question. Where you put the bike lanes, people park their vehicles, is that, is that gonna interfere with any of that?
I, I, we, we think that we're wide enough that we can still have the cars parked and do the offset of, of the bike lane. So, but that is a pretty wide.
Yeah, it's pretty wide, a lot of people just park, you know? I'm just kind of curious if they would be upset.
Yeah, no, I, I think that we have enough.
It's checked on everything?
So. I guess this is a question for the police department, but if you're, you've got a bike lane, and you're parking a car in a bike lane, is that car in violation?
That's kind of what I'm talking, wanting to think about.
I think we have both to, we've got enough width in that street to accommodate parking up against the curb. Then the bike lane would be off the side of it, and then you have your driveway, so.
And the only reason I bring that up, there's a guy on Kansas, where he's going, parks his car at an angle, and it's blocked. But I mean, people do do that, and they do that on Arizona, too. Not so much on Nevada, but, I mean, that's why I was just kind of concerned. So how would we, how would you handle that? So how would we, how would you handle that? Would you have the police do that?
Exactly. I'd have code enforcement take care of that.
That would be something that the P D should be enforcing now?
That's what I say they have to take care of.
You might remind P D that it's happening now that they need to have it corrected. Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions?
I, I asked the question that I had before. I, this has been in the works for so long, though I, another thought came to mind is where, what was the genesis of this and how did we decide where the bike lanes were going to be?
That's a good question. When I started two years ago, I think this project had already started. So I, I was, I just kind of ran with what was already in place. So I, I know Steve's new, so I don't really know how it came about.
Did I ever have a bike study?
Okay.
We did not.
I mean, you know, like you do with the cars, with the hose and everything?
Yeah.
You know, I think, I think what needs to happen is with our area-wide planning is that we need to make sure that the planning is part, this is part of the planning because what we'd like to do is be able to, at some point, be able to take those bike lanes not only up to like, you know, Simpsons Rest, but a way to circle back around through maybe some of the streets somehow, maybe Linden or somewhere else like that and get them back into town, the same thing on, you know, west end of town. And I think that area-wide planning, I think it'd be good for, for us to insist that they look at that for bike lanes because we want this to be not just a single direction, it needs to be circled back into town. And that really, really has to go that direction.
And Mr. Mayor, no, some of the, again, I wasn't here for this either, but I, I believe some of it was predicated on the width of the street to accommodate. And you think about Nevada and Kansas are both very wide streets, but eventually I think when we bring people back to Commercial with our new river design and even the existing trail, we want some connectivity there as well. So agreed, I think we should be creating a bike system.
Well, you know, and our, our, our streets are, are very narrow, but you know, other communities have narrow streets as well and they do have bike lanes. And for instance, last week, Mr. Ruler and I were up in Boulder and we looked at all of the biking that goes on because of the students up there, I mean, there's bikes all over the place. Some of the streets are narrow, some are wide. And I think really what it boils down to, and I know that we get complaints about the, the biking every now and then and people biking through the streets. And I think it's just a matter of the residents, please turn that off, please, that the residents of the community are going to have to take some time and get used to that. You know, if we're going to make ourselves a recreational destiny, destiny and biking is going to be part of that, then we as residents are going to have to start accepting that there's going to be bikes on the road. That's just, that's just part of it. And so if we're going to become a destiny, I think it's just something that we have to try to get used to. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question. Is, is there any, the state funds, are, are they gonna, are they in danger of being needed to be spent or they'll be, have to be returned or is there any timeframe for that?
My understanding there is, but we're, we're, we're within that timeframe. So like I said, it's, we have, we have a, Mr. Mayor wrote a letter for the overmatch and Mr. Don Skengas got back with us and he told us we're good, so. We have a, we have a contractor now on board, so we're ready to pull the trigger.
Kenny anticipated, you said that the, the stripe is going to be an epoxy-based product. Do they give an idea of how long that would probably last?
It's the same product that we just put down on the streets. So it, it's better than the water-based?
Just keep our fingers crossed.
Yes.
Another question, Mayor? I, I just, I mean, you know, I, I understand it, it seems like it's a project that's been ongoing for some time, but I, I think it, we're sort of potentially building a bridge to nowhere in the sense of like, it would be really, really nice if we could, because I've been downtown several weekends lately, I've seen, I really strongly suspect they're out of town mountain bikers, but they've been traveling up and down Commercial. I'm presuming going maybe to the wormhole, I'm guessing, but this is my point. It would be great if we could have a, a trail that does take them out Nevada, running a bike lane out Nevada, so they're able to get that. But then it'd be great if we could help them get from the downtown area to there and, and back to the downtown area so we can really encourage people to be in the downtown area. I mean, I don't know if it's too late to alter some of those plans to somehow get a bike lane down. I don't know, I just, it's a lot of money to spend and if, if we could maybe make a better focus or delay it just long enough to get into the area-wide planning, I think it's something that we should consider.
Now, like I said earlier, be, like you said, just try to get people to circle back into town, you know, that's the idea.
I mean, potentially, I don't know what the ramifications would be, but potentially tabled?
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just another thing that we can look into, there's certainly nothing that prohibits people from using the street for biking, that, that is allowable. Some cities, what they do in lieu of bike lanes on narrow corridors is they'll just designate them as a bike route and put signs and then traffic calming to make sure your, your speeds are appropriate for bicycles. So that's another option that we can explore that might be a little less expensive to continue and, and do those connections you all are talking about.
Would that kind of suffice?
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be great and it seems like something we could implement pretty quickly.
Does.
A bike route on, on Commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand that you're concerned, but it just coincidentally, I was looking on social media and there was a big feed about no bike lanes in Trinidad and I saw it on the agenda ahead of time. So I think it's good that we at least try to do something so people will understand. We know it's important, but you know, forty-nine thousand dollars for one point one, I mean, there's budget constraints that are involved. We've got to start somewhere, you know, why not the most, the safest streets?
I, I think if we just do it in conjunction with some sort of bike route.
Yeah.
That, that would show we're serious about the, the bike trail, I'm sorry, lanes and really trying to direct people back to downtown.
I think your idea, you know, like, or getting some.
Signs up.
Yeah.
And I think that that would probably be maybe the next thing that maybe you need to look into.
Yeah.
To see and see what streets we could accommodate and what the sign would be, I think that'd be a good start.
Could do that. And there was information in that, that traffic study that H D did for us. As you remember, going up Santa Fe Trail is one of the, the paths as well to get out to the, to park.
Yeah, that's going to be a, a big area that's going to be used quite a bit.
We're getting ready to do another grant with C dot to do the, the multi-use path from basically the radio station, I went out to C dot.
Any other questions?
Sounds a hot dog. Yeah.
All of all, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item eight C consideration, thank you, Mr. Just.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just going to wait because I have this.
You missed. Eighteen consideration of the request or proposal submitted by S G M for the Main Street Improvement Project number twelve dash twenty twenty-three in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and that is from capital funds for design. Entertainer motion, please. Second? Give us some information.
Yeah, so we, we sent out a request for proposal. We received three proposals. We interviewed two of the three, which was S G M and Drexel Burrell. The other one was so far out, it was about three times the price of the, the two that we interviewed, so we figured they really weren't, they were just giving us a number. They're not interested in number, I guess I would say. So anyway, we, we had interviews in this room with S G M and Drexel Burrell. Everybody had a scoring sheet, they had city manager, Audra, all the directors came in and at the end of the interview, everybody pretty much liked S G M. So that's, at this point, we're, we, we have worked with S G M in the past, the city has, we have a good working relationship with them. And they've given us, this is the design Main Street from the bell block up to basically Main and Nevada where the concrete is. They're going to be looking at different options on the, as far as street trees. They're going to be looking at potentially doing maybe one-sided parking. I don't think that's going to fly, but they talked about different options and different things that we can do. All, all the A D A concerns, we're going to be redoing it. It's, it's basically a complete rebuild from storefront to storefront, so we're doing sidewalks, curb ramps. Anyway, we'll have the, the good thing is we'll have the design done and we'll go out and now we can seek shovel-ready grants and if we find, we've, we've found that a lot of the, they like to have grants in place, it gives you a better heads up on, on receiving those kind of funds. So if we get the project designed and we, we look better when we go seek a grant for that project.
Before I turn it over to the rest of council, I know that a lot of this funding that you're talking about from the infrastructure, that's the I I J A funding that you're talking about, infrastructure funding from the federal government, is that one the?
Yeah, this is coming out of capital.
Oh, this probably capital. And the other reason I was thinking about.
Are you talking about this, you did construction or design?
Oh, sorry.
I'm saying.
The construction portion of it.
Construction, yeah.
That could be either federal or again state.
You know, they've got some timelines to utilize that funding or even to apply for it. So anyway, council questions?
And we had any other dealings with the project manager in the past?
Yes, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we worked with the S G M. My understanding, they did Cedar Street and what else did they do? I'm trying to remember the projects.
Commercial.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So even though this isn't going to be a break-in lane project like Cedar and Commercial, we've had a good working relationship with them, so.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to emphasize, sorry to interrupt, we're really excited for this project. We really, really want all options on the table, community involvement. We want to look at, is there any option we can expand sidewalks to make for more room for outdoor dining? Can we beautify the whole area? We've even talked about, it's too expensive to put Trinidad bricks, but maybe in intersections we could have stamped concrete that replicates that. And really the, the biggest thing that I want to emphasize is when you get off on, on Main Street from I twenty-five, we really want it to be just a beautiful welcome to downtown entrance and then continue on into downtown. The other thing that we are going to ask this consultant to do is look at the parking space, or parking area that we're proposing over behind the gas station and do a really nice beautification of that as well, that we'd like to, you know, sky's the limit. We could have food truck rodeos there, parking, whatever. So this is a very holistic thing, which is why the price is so high, but we're really excited to just really look at Main Street under a microscope and see how we can just make it one of the best Main Streets in the state.
As well as the art space, that area in front?
Yeah.
So if we could get a couple little pocket parks, you know, it'd just help. And like you, like Steve said, it's a, it's entrance into downtown.
Questions?
Will you, will this firm ask for any public input as far as design or what, what citizens want?
No, it's, it's going to be a little different than what, H G was on that traffic study, they did ask for input. I don't anticipate, do you?
They did mention that they would have at least one public meeting in their interview.
Okay.
And I think that's important, to have an opportunity. Once they get more, some renderings done, we can put those out on our website and get some comments and make sure, certainly working with business owners as well.
You mentioned starting at the bell block?
Mid-block, yeah, that's where the design is going to go all the way from. That's where the, the old project left off at?
You know, the way through. Or Convent?
No, Church Street? That way for the pass.
Just west of Convent.
Half of the block, yeah.
About mid-block is where the, where the old project ended or started.
I thought you said bell block.
Again, bell block, that is the bell block.
That is the bell block, correct. An A S C R T theater. So it comes this way.
Okay. I guess I haven't been paying attention.
When you drive down there, look at it, look, you'll see the difference.
I'm bored by that. But still do you like, I'm going to check it out because I don't believe you guys.
We, we're going to take a reset.
Any other questions?
No, other than I, I think it's a good idea. At, at one time we were only going to go from where Animus was, but this is a better idea to get the whole area fixed up again. I'd like to see some of those trees taken out because it's just tearing up the walks and, and put a different kind of tree in there that doesn't grow as bad because it really does, especially right there in front of Caruso's office and Moses, the trees are tearing up everything. And then are, are you going to, when we get to like Nevada, are we going to change any of that to the parking lot? Is that going to be in the design or are we going to leave that as it is?
I'm sorry, where?
Well, you know, where the, where we go to Main Street, where it has, from Main Street to Nevada, are we going to change it? How are we going to design the parking area? Are we going in one different way or, I mean?
That interchange will probably stay, but what we've asked them to do is to incorporate that area behind Duran's. So that'll, the project will probably skip over to the park area, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree with you.
We're not going to redo that inter, that interchange yet. It's fairly new.
Well, yeah, I just, how, how to get into the parking lot would be kind of tough because of, you know, you try to get out of Safeways here and it's kind of tough with the traffic coming around that blind corner.
We make interact from Nevada or I don't think there's room to interact off of Main.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it's kind of tough there because it's somebody we plowed into because they come pretty fast across there. And then we, we do own some of that, I mean, the railroad owns some of that, but they gave us some of that land, you know that.
C dot owns it currently and we're working with them right now to transfer that over to.
Because it would really be nice to do something across that vital, they got weeds going out of there and everything we have a nice bypass and it looks terrible.
Yeah.
And we put some trees or a wall there or something to.
Exactly.
And then it would be a good place for the Prevotory Valley Fishing Dill to maybe put a nice sign there that people can go down into the park there to go fishing.
That's what we envision as a little park.
Yeah.
Maybe to, to park and then.
Okay.
Picnic tables, trees.
Well, you're on the ball, you're doing good.
Yeah.
Ms. Ogletree, you have any questions?
Will, will both sides of Main be involved in the redesign?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. And, and then I, I wanted to hear at the beginning, how do we think that we'll have the money to put together the work that they're going to propose? Are there grants that we're going to seek?
Are you talking for construction or for, for the design?
Yeah, for, for construction.
Uh, yes, we, that, we will actively seek grants at that point, both C dot or federal.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Ogletree, also, one of the reasons we selected S G M is because they do have a grant writer on staff, so we're hoping they can help us with that process as well, but we'll pursue whatever option we can to get that funded as quickly as possible.
Let me get those people here. Yeah, go ahead. Any questions from this side?
Just, it's cool that you have, that, in the holster, to be able to present even if it doesn't work out with S G M, you still now have a, a layout to present to other people to bid on.
This is the bid for S G M.
This, this is just the design?
Yeah, that's saying the design.
Correct. So that's what we're, we're, we're coming to council to get permission to hire this firm to design this section.
This is for.
So I think, I think it's great that the city is going to have the public, especially, I mean, I think it's especially important that business owners along the route be made aware of it, public, we can get input. I think that'll really be a good catalyst for excitement and, you know, people to, to look forward to it. Do we have an idea of if, if funding wasn't an issue, which obviously is a big issue, if funding was? if, if funding wasn't an issue, which obviously is a big issue, if funding wasn't an issue, what sort of timeline are we looking at from, for project completion? Any ideas?
I think they, based on their numbers, they, they should be done by, is my understanding? This one?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Williamson. So for construction, there's, there's basically two options for how to undertake that when we get to that phase. And one of them involves shutting down entire blocks and obviously we want to get First Street done before that happens. And that's the quicker option. But if we opt to have vehicle access still on Main Street and only close half of it at a time, it might take a little bit longer. They haven't really given us a construction timeline estimate, but that'll come out in the design case. Yeah.
So I, I think that's great, we have public input. And then I think it's a really good idea to really focus on where possible, having parklets because number one, that's sort of putting really nice aesthetics downtown, giving people areas to gather, whatever. But it, it may potentially, and I'm sure there's people more knowledgeable on this, but it might increase funding options such as GOCO and stuff like that. It, it may give us some extra stuff or options for funding.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Williamson, that's, outdoor dining is something we want them to help us study and, and come back with those, those options. So it's definitely, definitely well taken.
I just was going to ask, it seems to me that, a while back, a couple of years ago, when we were talking this project over here, when we have money in the capital improvements, did we put $2 million away for that?
Well, if we did, you got to spend on First Street.
Yeah.
Four and a half million.
So I, I can tell you.
Come and tell us that.
You guys committed it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you've got to give us more information here.
Ms. Ogletree, do you have any other questions?
No, no, I don't, sorry. Technical difficulty.
You know, I, I do know that it's going to cause, you know, so many times we do anything on Main Street, or any thoroughfare, it creates a lot of havoc with businesses and people traveling. And I do know that it's going to probably take a good year, year and a half for completion. It's going to take some time. As far as the design goes, I think that we really need to look holistically at the area. What are you, what we are, what are we trying to achieve? I think it's more than just fixing the street, more than fixing, like I said, just the sidewalks. I think it's looking at, what is it going to enhance this part of town when people drive in? I, I think that we need to look at the, the design of the traffic pattern. I think everything needs to be on the table. One thing that came up earlier is that the, the trees, and matter of fact, one thing, matter of fact, Ms. Trugler and I were last week, we had a good conversation when we were going to Boulder. And he mentioned something like, I think the recommendation that you said that trees that are planted should be redone like every 10 years to keep the trees from pushing up the, the grates and the concrete. So that could be something in the plan that we might have to do. Plan something that's not, that's not so invasive. That would be the other thing. You were talking about the, how to get into this parking lot down here. And I think maybe a different curb cut to get into that, whatever design they come up with. Because right now, I think there's one at the back and far on the back end of that. But I think one closer to the street by street side, to Main Street would be better, right as you pass the convenience store, to have a curb cut so that people can, you know, circle around if necessary. I think it would be good because they're going to have to be better access to get in and out of that area if it's going to become a parking lot.
Sure.
But I just say, I think that we really need to begin to look at Trinidad in a different light as to what is really, what are we trying to achieve? You know, I know that Mr. Williamson, he's talked about making Trinidad a destination point. This is all inclusive. So, anything else?
Yeah, I want to know it because I want to know where the money is from Barfield. Do you guys pay any of that money?
Any other questions? Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Justin.
Thank you.
Item D, consideration of Housing Now Incentive Program Funding Agreement for 613 Arizona Avenue. I guess Mr. Yurman is here.
Frank's ready for it.
First of all, let me call for a motion, please.
Make a motion for a consideration of Housing Now Incentive Program Funding Agreement for 613 Arizona Avenue?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Yurman.
So if you've been by 613 Arizona, this is definitely eligible property. It's actually really exciting because we also toured 101 Pine that just submitted an application, which is a building just right on the corner there as well. You know, again, this is a great example of $200,000 leveraging an additional 1.9 million effects of that building. Very excited about both those properties. I, I, we're not talking about 101 Pine, but 101 Pine is also amazing. You already got six storefronts on top of the housing and then you're going to get to get back taxable, taxable. So that will most likely be coming back. We, I didn't have a chance to look at the building prior to tonight's meeting, so that's probably on the 16th agenda. But tonight, 613 Arizona definitely meets the qualifications. Mrs. Percy is here and Paul Glenn, the architect, is here. I know they are starting to work on design. There's quite a bit to that. The other piece, I know that you, you have asked me before, the parking lot behind those two buildings is a shared parking lot, it's a separate parcel. They are planning on an ADA spot for both buildings and also accommodating one fully ADA unit in 613 Arizona with a lift in the back from the parking space. So very excited about this project. Went through that today as well and it needs a lot of love.
He's got a good project.
Questions from council?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. You know, that area of town was at one time really gorgeous. It was actually one of the focal points of the community apart from Maine and Commercial. I just hope, I want to thank the people that are coming to take on these projects for one. But I, I hope that this is the beginning of the resurrection of that area of town.
You know, one thing that, you know, with the StanTech and the airway planning, when they elevated that highway, it really cut and really, there's, there's a, there's a very, you, you can point to a nexus of that elevated highway and the fact that it had to that block. And I know we discussed today some, some improvements with the, with the owners on Pine Street about making that, that connection to the college. So I know you're, just like you're looking at Main Street, there is certainly, I couldn't help but relish in Bob's pain of hearing how long it took them to get a CDOT striping grant. When it's on system and you have a street plan that's going through a highway, CDOT tends to move those projects along a little bit faster than off-system. And so I think Pine Street's one of those locations in town and also with the equity issue of that elevated highway. One thing I know the airway planner is going to look at is just the tax, the tax for one pack, so when the highway went up and when that area became blinded. And I think that's a really strong case to make to a federal highway system that this is a, this is a cause and effect relationship. So as you look for grant funding, to look at creating, creating that potential connection back to that part of town and to the college. We talked about that today as well. So I know StanTech will be looking at that and it's really exciting. So it's just good to see these projects kind of coming together and having that continuity.
This 613 Arizona is gorgeous. You, I went by there this morning on my way to work and the craftsmanship in that building can't be duplicated.
That road.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's really amazing to see these buildings coming together.
Yes, it is.
I'm actually like, my, I'm up in, I'm done in June and I'm like crying that I'm not going to get to like see them. I'm going to have to obviously have to come back.
You can come back.
But I, I will come back and spend, I'll have lunch and spend sales tax dollars here. So no problem there, but.
This is Frank.
How, how many apartments are you actually going to put in there?
There's eight in that one.
There's eight now, but you're not changing it. That's just going to be wood.
Yeah, do you want to hear?
Yeah, just kind of curious how.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. To answer your question, eight units in there. We're going to remain eight units.
Single bedroom, right? Single bedroom?
Pardon me?
Single bedroom?
Uh, yes. All of those. It's kind of interesting. Crystal is one of the owners, she's in the audience here. Both the Pine Building and the Arizona Building, there's many years difference. We're, we're looking at, I believe it was 1896 on Pine, believe it or not.
Wow.
And 1915 on Arizona. The interesting thing about that is both buildings have the same trim and both buildings have the same type of Murphy bed. So we're going to, we're going to keep those in both buildings. The, so on 613 Pine Building, you actually enter into a living room with the Murphy bed. And there's kind of a transition room and then there's a bedroom in the back. So they are one bedroom with that option of a Murphy bed in the living room. And we're going to keep them that way. The kitchens, bathrooms are all going to be upgraded, state-of-the-art. One of the units on the main floor will be handicap-accessible. And so we're excited about that project.
Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions?
No questions. I just was thrilled when I saw that, when I opened my drive and I saw that this is one of them that we were considering. Because I've always dreamed, when I passed that building, thinking how grand it could be. So I'm very excited that, that people have taken an interest in it. I'm glad that we can support it.
They're beautiful buildings. They really are. To answer your question, Karen, right now, we're, we're trying to be the catalyst in that two-block stretch up Pine to create some sort of, of university district. And if you go back in history, that was really an integral part of North Commercial. And when the highway went through, it severed that piece off. And so there's, there's a number of different buildings along there. One of the other buildings we're doing is Eagles Hall. And then all of those really deserved to be a part of kind of a small historic district in that area. So we're excited that Crystal and Bobby are moving forward with both buildings. It's really.
Questions from?
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
I would really just like to add my appreciation to what everyone said. It's, it's amazing. You go by that building and it always gives you such a real profound sense of disappointment. I mean, no one builds a building to end up looking like that. And to Councilman Grego's point, it is, the workmanship there is incredible. So it's going to really be nice to see. Sort of like dovetailing into this, you know, I think anything we can do as a city to help push that revitalization along, we really can. I, I don't know the name of that road that would be the continuation that connects like over, back over to Commercial Street, but it connects Pine to Commercial right there by the.
Is it Broom Street?
Yeah. I mean, just a simple grade change to where it comes down and, and make that road more passable for people would encourage a route of connectivity and could potentially help be a catalyst to, you know, get it over the hump. I, I think we could help out in, in, in some regard there. I mean, obviously that costs real money, but I'm just super excited to see it and glad it's happening.
And that recommendation that you had, I think that's something that I think is under consideration already that, you know, but to make it more, make it better. You know, what's kind of nice is that revitalizing these projects like you were seeing, Mr. Trugler was at, at one time, it was a very prominent area in town. And, you know, the architecture, that's one thing that we do have in this community is the architecture all around town is beautiful. And to try to keep it as intact as we possibly can. And thank you for investing in the community to help maintaining that revitalization. Thank you very much. And I, I think it's interesting and very notable that those buildings, like you said, the architecture is there and making them to where they're usable again. They've just been rat-infested places in the past. One question I have is any, I don't know if it's even possible to maybe make one of those units into like a two-bedroom? Because I'm not sure how many other units, other apartments in town are just single-bedroom right now. I don't really know how many two-bedroom units we have, we need in this community. That would be something that I think that maybe we need to explore. I don't know if that's something that you can think about. Another project on the old Eagles building, that would be an ideal place as well. But I think we need to look at maybe instead of single-bedroom, maybe at least a two-bedroom units.
Yeah. So we, we work very closely with History Colorado and on a whole number of different levels. And so the projects that we work on go through History Colorado. We do cursory reviews. So, you know, we're, we're kind of bound in one way by the existing that's there. So with the Eagles and, or I'm sorry, with, with 613 Arizona, 101 Pine, you know, those, those units that are there were all studio, single, you know, bedroom units. On Eagles Hall, I can't answer your question. We're doing that building as well. That is eight units. There is two one-bedroom, two two-bedroom and four studios there. So we, we are trying to balance that out. But we, with that building, we had a little bit more of a blank palette on the upper level to work with. And, and the state agreed with what we, you know, designed. So with these, they really like the idea of keeping the smaller units. But I do know that, yes, absolutely, there's a need for the two-bedrooms.
They, the building behind 613, that's not part of it, but I, I think that, that building itself is still being used as apartment complex, apartment context, correct?
Is that the house next door again?
Right, next, up.
North.
North.
North, yes, it is, yeah.
Because I, I remember the gentleman that bought that years ago and did some renovation.
Yeah, I guess I'm pretty.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, have a question.
Go ahead.
If, that, that building, I think it has like the balcony at the back. Is, is that part of the original structure? And if so, is it, is that going to be part of?
So if you go back in, in the, the original documents that we researched, it was added later. So it is part of the original, I guess, years, you know, I guess we have to pick a point with History Colorado and pick a point in the history of the building. That did come back like a year or two later. So in the grand scheme of things, it is original, but not to the extent.
Okay. I was curious.
Yeah, no, we, we are replacing that with a period-style iron exits there. So it's, actually both buildings have that same, the design.
Any other questions?
That would be, that would be required for fire exit, would it? You'd have to put that back exit for.
Non-combustible, correct.
Yeah, right. Because that's, I think that's probably why they.
Okay, and finalize this, and this is for $200,000 incentives and each guy's one.
We're so grateful. We're grateful for this. Thank you.
Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And thank you, and thank you for like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, can we ask you a question?
Sure.
I mean, while we're in that area there, has anybody come forward to ask for development of the old Sears building there on the corner?
No.
Because they have apartments upstairs, but the front end is, I was just kind of curious if anybody would have.
Which building is that?
It's a corner right across from the college building, on the corner of Pine and Nevada.
It's on Pine and Nevada?
Yeah.
So that's one, that's one building down, right?
Yes.
That's, that's east of the college.
You know, I know exactly which building you're talking about. I have not gotten anything from that and.
I just, I just wanted to make an inquiry. That's on the agenda.
Right, on the agenda?
So long as you got it.
On item nine, council reports. On item nine, council reports.
Yep, now Veterans Council, uh, since the veterans took over a few years ago, the membership has gone from six members to over 50 members now. And Holloway Hall is, is the largest event hall in Trinidad. Uh, they're currently in the process of writing grants for, to upgrade the electrical and ADA toilets. So.
Lot of maintenance costs.
I have nothing tonight.
Ms. Ogletree, do you have anything to report tonight?
Um, on Saturday, the East Street School, I believe, is having a grand opening. I'm in the middle of the day and that's very exciting. I've had a chance to go over there and see where the apartments in use. And it's even nicer than I thought it was going to be. So, excited about that. That's all I have to.
Nothing to report, Mayor. Did you go to the TPR meeting?
I did. Um, I mean, there was no major changes and, um, the five-year and 10-year plan were not addressed. There is nothing, um, nothing to report. I come back.
It was, it was, I did attend the TPR. Uh, the main focus was, um, I would say maybe, um, updated maintenance issues, but a lot of it was dealing with eastern areas and stuff like that.
Uh, my report, uh, Mr. Ruler and I, uh, we went to Boulder last week and attended the 100th anniversary of the Colorado Municipal League. And it was very nice. Uh, what that was all about is that Trinidad was one of the 11 founding members of the Colorado Municipal League 100 years ago. And, uh, I think everybody was represented there, I think, that originally started. They also had a photo of the original people that started, that met there. And what was interesting, they met in Boulder and they met in that same building. So, it was kind of cool, you know, it was kind of neat. And then they had, uh, some of the students from Boulder did a, a skit of, uh, how it all came about. And at the end, they asked all of the members if we wanted to be part of the CML, which means yay or nay or whatever, yeah. So, it was really kind of neat to connect also with other, uh, the other people from.
Who was, who was the origin Trinidad person? Do you remember?
I don't, I don't remember the name.
Yeah.
But what I did do is, uh, I sent the information to Mr. Ruler.
Yeah.
Cause I got some photos. I received some, uh, two photos from CML. And I asked him to forward those to Anissa so that maybe she could put them in the newspaper of the original people and it has their names. And then the people that were there last week and who was there as well. So, it was nice to represent, you know, the community again for an anniversary that we were a big part of, you know, back 100 years ago.
We were going to be, we were going to be the capital.
As you know, that CML has done tremendous things, uh, in the past 100 years and continue today with every, how they advocate for municipalities. Uh, and with that being said, just to let you know, like I said, I've been trying to stay on top of a couple of, uh, the bills that have been running through that could affect us. Uh, that 1294, which is the pollution protection measures unit or bill. And, uh, that is still alive. I thought that they had killed it last week, but evidently I talked to, uh, Mr. Beely, Mr. Beasley yesterday and he said it is still alive and well. So, we'll see what happens with that. And that, that's not a really good bill. They, they've made some changes. But I'm not sure, I would have changed, I haven't, what changed there. 213, uh, was in committee again today. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure what's going to happen with that. They made some changes with Colorado Municipal League. And I do know, I think, CCI, they're still in the opposed, uh, side of things and less amended. They've made some major changes, but, uh, they're still not to the point where I think that we could, we could actually deal with it, you know, so. So, the preemption part that they had in there has been taken out, but that was only a small portion of it. Uh, one item that was in there that I know that Mr. Ruler and I have talked about is the, um, where DOLA will become the regulation, regulating agency of that. And what that does is that could put us and all the municipalities at odds with, uh, with, with DOLA. And that, that's not good because that's not their purpose. So, that's one of the things. The other thing, and I, I'm not sure if any of you have been hearing about this, but there's the Senate Bill 23303, and that's that property tax bill. Cause everybody is aware that property taxes are supposed to.
Increase.
Increase. And, uh, they are trying to get that, the governor is trying to get that to run through the legislature. And hopefully, taking that down to where the increases of our tax bills will be and we won't get hit so hard. That was all that I had. And like I said, that was enough, but I just wanted to say, especially going up to Boulder and doing that, I thought that was, that was incredible. And spending time with Mr. Ruler and getting to know Mr. Ruler, so. Mr. Ruler, what do you have tonight?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Anissa's already put together a beautiful press release that we'll get out this week about the event. So, um, looking forward to that. Uh, just one thing for me tonight, I just, uh, circling back to our utility bills, I really wanted to, uh, again emphasize and acknowledge our, our tremendous billing staff. They've really been, ran through the wringer. First, having to correct a problem in their billing system and then secondly, having to deal with customers calling, uh, and with concerns. And they're the, the frontline on this. So, they, they get to hear all the good, bad and ugly. And I just really want to thank them for their efforts and helping us navigate through the issue.
Mr. Downs?
No report, Mayor. Yeah, I've been pretty quiet tonight. Yeah, I had a sore cut out.
Well, him winding it up, most of the journey. Second. Second. All roll.
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Do you have that?